So yeah, all fifty-one council seats are up for grabs this year, just two years after the previous election cycle due to last year's redistricting. This primary is scheduled for June twenty-seventh like the others. Tonight, we are talking to, you know, to you, the two of you. Obviously, the three people are seeking the Democratic nomination for the nineteenth district. The district's currently represented by Vicky Palladino, Republican, who took office in two thousand and twenty-two. She beat Tony Avella, who won the Democratic primary. Now, this year's primary includes the three candidates, Paul Graziano, Christopher Bay, and Tony Avella. Tony Avella said that he had a scheduling conflict and couldn't make it. Now, also joining us tonight is Serena Rondres, who's there, who's there in the window? And she co-founded Queens Post and is also the publisher of those websites and Borough Magazine, which covers Western Queens. She's a co-moderator. So Serena is going to go over the format. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Christian, and again, welcome everyone. Tonight's debate will include two rounds, with the first round being questions that were prepared, and then a second round with questions coming from the viewers. But to all of tonight's viewers, if you have a question and would like to ask the candidates, please submit them using the Q and A feature at the bottom of the screen. The questions received will be screened and those selected will be put out to the candidates. But for opening statements, each candidate has two minutes for their opening statement to introduce themselves, and we're going to start with Christopher.
Okay, thank you very much and good evening, everyone. My name is Christopher Bay, B A E, running for city council, District nineteen. And first and foremost, shout out to Schnepp's Media for just providing this incredible and important forum to let folks know about local political races. But yes, that's Bay, and you know, that's not, you know, I'm not as young as folks think I am at the doors when I'm talking to voters. But it is the term of endearment that Gen Z folks use. I was born and raised right here in Bayside, in the Greater Bayside area. My parents got their start, they were working-class immigrant folks who got their start here on two twelve Street and Seventy-third Avenue with the co-op. And I'm very proud that they instilled in me the values of public education, hard work, and public service. And, you know, in terms of public education, you know, I took that to heart. I went to Bronx Science, SUNY Binghamton, and CUNY Law School, and I certainly worked hard at each of those places. And I jumped right into public service, spent my whole career, legal career, over seven years at the Queens District Attorney's Office, where I was advocating on behalf of victims, you know, I was cutting my teeth with some of the best defense attorneys in the city. But I was also learning to collaborate, you know, I was learning how within the, you know, within the laws and within the criminal justice system, I could work with judges, defense attorneys, to do what's best for the public. And I am bringing those experiences to the table now. You know, I am a Democrat, but at some point, I do feel like our party has lost its way with messaging that we've been putting out the past few years, whether it was defund the police or whether it was, you know, the progressives really pushing for bail and discovery reform, which I believe you need to make some sensible modifications to, or just this general sense that we're not doing enough for our constituents here on the ground. We are squeezing out our working and middle-class families. We are not providing the ample and enough resources for our students in our public education system. And that's why I am running for CD nineteen. I'm running for a safer and stronger Queens, and that's why I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thanks, Christopher.
Hi, everybody. I'm Paul Graziano, and I'm running for city council in CD nineteen. Hello, and thanks to Schnepp's Media as well, and nice to see you again, Chris, as always. Many of you may know me. I've been around for the last three decades protecting our neighborhoods. My slogan for this race is it all starts with our homes. If our neighborhoods get ruined, the rest doesn't matter. I am running on a pro-neighborhood platform, protecting our communities, and that can be in a lot of different things, but one of the things that most recently happened, I again, thirty-year track record of protecting our communities through zoning, through land use, through education and public safety reform. But more importantly, what happened in the last three years, where first the city government and then the governor herself tried to essentially destroy our communities, not just in Northeast Queens, but across the entire state, and I was the the leader of the coalition that stopped her, actually only six weeks ago, on April twentieth was when we finally stopped her this year from ruining our communities through overdevelopment proposals and lots of other things that would have radically changed our communities. I want to bring that to the city council. I want to continue working on not only land use but education. I'm the only candidate in the race who has a first grader in the district at PS two oh nine. So obviously, I have skin in the game, so to speak. I'm also a product of the public schools here in Northeast Queens. I also went to Bronx Science, something that Chris and I have in common. And obviously, also taking care of our senior population. And one of the things that is a bone of contention right now is the push to take away Medicare from city retirees, and in fact, the mayor today announced that he was trying to do this, although the retirees will immediately be in court to stop this, and I support the retirees one hundred percent. And the last thing I'll mention before we go on is the elephant in the room, which is our third candidate, Tony Avella, who does not have a scheduling conflict, but is afraid to debate myself, and I also believe Chris, as this is not the first debate he has skipped. And it's really a shame, as this is the only one that the media is actually putting on. So I will be sure to be responding to questions, not only from my own perspective, but from perspectives that Tony Avella has stated publicly, so that the audience here can know exactly what he stands for, which is not our community anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So now we'll move on to the first round of questions, which Christian and I will ask for the candidates. In this round, each candidate will have up to two minutes for their answer, and then Christopher or Paul will each have one minute to provide a rebuttal if needed. So candidates, I will be keeping track of your time as we go. You will hear a sound when your time is up. Please raise your hand if you have a rebuttal, so we may call on you. We will go back and forward in terms of who answers first. Paul will start with the first question, and then Christopher with the second. So, Christian?
Yeah, hi, Paul. Thank you very much. So crime is up twenty-two percent year-to-date in the one hundred and eleventh precinct and twenty-two percent in the one oh nine precinct. Felony assaults have also doubled this year across the two precincts. How do you plan to address this issue, and what strategies do you propose to foster stronger collaboration between law enforcement and the communities?
So one of the key things that needs to happen in our district, in our council district, which again straddles the one oh ninth and the one eleventh, is a splitting of the one oh ninth precinct. You know, the one oh ninth geographically is one of the largest precincts in the entire city, and we have seen with the increasing density, particularly south of Northern Boulevard, all the way to the Long Island Expressway, much of this area with the increased density has been taking up an enormous amount of the resources in our council district. North of Northern Boulevard tends to be much less dense, but again, geographically, to get from one location to another, it just doesn't make sense anymore. In addition, as I've stated at other events, there have been issues where it isn't even a time issue. For example, there was a burglary in the Broadway Flushing neighborhood, which is approximately a six-minute drive from the precinct, and it took three and a half hours for the precinct to show up. So when it should have been a six-minute drive. So we definitely have to deal with resources. We definitely need to work closer with the police and add more police into the precinct, but splitting the precinct into two will be a good start to make sure that the north side of the precinct and the south side of precinct will have two separate commands. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Christopher?
All right. So when it comes to rising crime trends and different categories of crime across the board are up, especially the important ones, burglaries, you know, grand larcenies of auto, robberies and what have you, and I believe it starts at the top, you know, it starts with the messaging that our parties put out. It is really incumbent on us to be advocating for changes, sensible modifications to our bail and discovery laws. And, you know, a lot of that is practical when there's just broad categories of different types of crimes within the DA's office that they just don't have the time and resources to prosecute. And I gotta be frank, a lot of grand larceny of autos are just at the bottom of the priorities list for DA's offices because, you know, yeah, you have to focus on the shootings and the stabbings, the robberies and the burglaries. And when we just have a lot of dismissals across the board, one, it's not a deterrent anymore. Folks feel empowered to continue to commit crimes. Two, the public actually loses faith in the criminal justice system. If they're a victim, they don't feel like their voice is being heard. If they're a neighbor and they saw that their neighbor was burglarized, and then they see the same person out in the street again, now it's just like, what is going on with their system? And so I have that experience when it comes to advocating for high-level changes. I know that that's not exactly what city council does, but I would use my platform to really lobby our elected officials on the state level to make sure we're addressing these issues.
Thank you, Christopher, and we can actually start this next question with you too. So Drag Queen Story Hour has sparked both support and controversy within this district. What is your stance in this program, and how do you plan to address the diverse perspectives and concerns surrounding it while also ensuring that children and families have access to inclusive and engaging literary experiences in a safe and respectful environment?
Yes, so I truly believe that any conversation should always start, especially in this one, sense of trying to understand from a sense of compassion from this idea and understanding that a lot of children, significant number of children who are exploring their identities are bullied and therefore or feel some sort of pressure in a way that they feel as if they contemplate suicide, or a lot of them, a good majority of them actually do go ahead and try to attempt suicide. And so we're talking about, we're talking about issues that are affecting our children in our schools. Now, with that being said, we have to create a safe space that allows for all of our, you know, different views to come together. But I do think conversely, our parents should have a say. And when it comes to issues, especially when it's, you know, gets to a point where it's like, at what age should we start exposing children to different viewpoints that could be deemed, you know, a little bit more radical than what we were used to when I was growing up? And, you know, I think it takes some generations for things to change slowly but surely, and we do have, we are taking steps fully, I think, in the right direction. But it's incremental, and we have to make sure all the stakeholders come to the table, that includes educators, that includes teachers, and it includes parents to make sure that on a school-by-school basis, everyone, all the stakeholders are having a say.
Thank you, Christopher.
Hi, can you repeat the beginning of the message of the question? Because I, for some reason, I didn't quite understand it. I didn't get it.
No, of course. So Drag Queen Story Hour
Okay, that's what I thought.
and controversy within the district.
Got it.
What is your stance on this program, and how do you plan to address the diverse perspectives?
I just wanted to make sure that that was correct. Okay. So again, you know, I have a one-year, a first grader, PS two oh nine. And when this came up, this really came up when my son was at the end of kindergarten. And I, you know, one of the things, again, as someone who is a stakeholder, as someone who does have a small child in school, it is very, it's a big issue. And it's a big issue in terms of how the argument was framed. I had a lot of conversations with just about every parent in my child's class, as well as many parents outside. I've spoken to teachers and administrators at the school as well. And the feeling about that in particular is that, and this is my position, is that Drag Queen Story Hour is inherently not, quote-unquote, a dangerous situation. But again, I think it's about what's age-appropriate. And one of the things that seems to be a pretty good compromise to this would be for, for example, the Queensborough Public Library being the venue for Drag Queen Story Hour, where it becomes an opt-in situation. Because Queensborough Public Library is, although people call it public, it's actually a private nonprofit organization as opposed to a governmental public school, right? So I think that, you know, again, the discomfort from the parents in my kids' class and in other classes has to do with the fact that this was sort of being foisted upon them in a way that made them very uncomfortable. So I think that, again, placing it in a place that's more of a neutral space that doesn't feel like it's intruding on their kids' education, where there's an opt-in rather than a situation that creates conflict, I think is a better way to approach it.
Right, Paul. All right. So we're going to ask the next question of you, Paul. There has been an increase in the number of smoke shops that have been illegally selling cannabis across New York City and this district. How do you propose addressing this issue, and what measures would you implement to ensure compliance?
So this all kind of goes back to, you know, and Chris touched on it before. You know, the state legislature has made a lot of distressing decisions over the last five years in terms of public safety, and, you know, the best of intentions perhaps, but maybe the worst in terms of rollout was legalizing cannabis, right? So by legalizing cannabis, they did that, but they didn't create guardrails. The guardrails being for the illegal shops that have proliferated, not just in our district, but across the entire city. I mean, it's it's absolutely crazy. And the idea, and one of the things I mentioned at a previous forum, is that there was a study done about a month ago that found that ninety percent of these smoke shops were LLCs held by Yemeni nationals, which was kind of shocking. So what's happening is, as each of these are being closed down, another one is being opened up by the same group of folks under a different LLC name. And that seems to be a huge issue. So I think it becomes an issue of licensing, it becomes an issue of creating the law, both at the state level and at the city level, to make these shops not in a nebulous gray area, but make them illegal. They should not be, you know, it's not just cannabis, it's vaping, menthol, cigarettes, a lot of other things that are being targeted towards kids in particular. All of these things are happening at the vape shops, not at the legal cannabis dispensaries. And I think there needs to be a, you know, a solidified effort between the legislature and the city council and the mayor and the governor to all come together and figure this out.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Christopher?
Yeah, it's certainly going to take all hands on deck to really tackle this issue, because it is just proliferating and just popping up anywhere and everywhere throughout our community, and especially the way that a lot of it is marketed and just looking, peering in. I can see why kids would be interested to just peer inside. But I mean, with that being said, I mean, I saw something recently about, you know, ramping up the fines for folks who are leasing these spaces to other business owners. I mean, that's certainly a start, you know, we need to de-incentivize folks from looking the other way when they know for a fact that the establishment is being used in a shady, if not illegal, way. And also, we just have to ramp up the fines and penalties, so that this is no longer just the cost of doing business. So that, you know, folks who are running these smoke shops, illegal smoke shops, know that, hey, if they get tackled with a thousand-dollar fine, I think that's just the cost of doing business. But if we can really ramp that up somehow, get folks on board to pass legislation to really stiffen the fines and/or criminal penalties, I think that's the only way we're going to do it. While obviously making sure that, you know, the legitimate license isn't permitted to come out in a timely fashion, so that, you know, this business from the legal side can really move ahead, you know, push us forward into the next generation.
Thank you, Christopher. So for the next question, we'd like you to start first. The mayor and council speaker have reached a deal on sidewalk dining and roadside dining. The deal would see the outdoor and roadside sheds up for about nine months of the year. So what strategies do you envision to support in regards to outdoor dining while addressing concerns such as garbage, space allocation, noise control, and maintaining the character of our neighborhoods?
You know what, and to be completely frank with you, I did not see the details of that agreement. So I mean, thanks for breaking it down for me in terms of the nine months out of the year. I do think, though, there has to be some sort of agency that, you know, over, there's some oversight as to how specific sheds are actually being used. So, you know, you mentioned some of the issues with, you know, garbage or sheds not being used. Because they can, they go both ways, right? So, you know, mom-and-pop shops, small businesses could really use the extra income and revenue generated with the extra space. And I'm all for supporting, you know, our local small businesses. But at the same time, you know, we have to look at it from a, you know, neighborhood-by-neighborhood basis to see, look, is this, does this make sense on this corner, on this block that's causing extra congestion? You know, does it make sense that, you know, that store on the other block just hasn't really utilized it to an extent where you know, kids are smoking weed there, and, you know, other people are just kind of camping out there and not being utilized the right way? So I think I'll take another look at just exactly what that agreement entails, but there has to be some sort of oversight to make sure that these sheds are used properly.
So first of all, I just want to make it very clear, I am opposed to any legalization of the sheds. I think that this is a terrible, terrible idea. I'm not against outdoor dining. There's plenty of ways and places to do outdoor dining with tables and chairs, et cetera, on sidewalk cafes and that kind of stuff, but you know, the one thing that needs to be understood, particularly in the context of our district, it, these are not, you know, the agenda of trying to make the seem as if this is for restaurants. It's really not. It's actually part of a strategy by the Department of Transportation to remove public parking spaces. The goal is to remove twenty-five percent of all street parking in the city of New York within the next five to ten years, which is, to me, insane. This is some fantasy that the DOT and this administration and the previous administration believe that if you get rid of street parking, people will stop driving cars. That is an impossibility in our district, obviously, with over ninety percent of people who live here having cars. This is not what has happened. And in fact, in other places where there's been increased development, there's just been increased car ownership, even if they're near public transportation. So I think it's a little disingenuous for the city to, quote-unquote, come to an agreement. If I'm in the council, I would try to alter that agreement or amend that agreement to really focus on areas such as our own which have very little access to public transportation, and we never will. It's never going to change. If anything, it's going to get worse, as it has continued to be. So I don't think it's a great idea. I am, I think that the sheds are actually magnets for problems and trouble. I think Chris was putting it very politely. There have been people who have been assaulted in the sheds. There have been people having sex in the sheds. There are people, there's definitely mentally ill people, homeless folks, et cetera, who need help. They need help. They don't need sheds to be living in. And of course, vermin. Huge problem with vermin and increase in vermin based on this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next question is for you. The migrant crisis has led to more than seventy thousand asylum seekers coming to New York City in the past year. What strain is it putting on the district, and what do you think is the solution? And do you think the district should be doing more or less to help?
Well, again, our district is one of the districts that has some of the least ability to absorb large numbers of people, right? We are a low-density district, purposefully so. Again, I've been defending that low-density district for thirty years, but that's also partially due to our lack of transit and access to social service agencies that folks like migrants or homeless, particularly mentally ill homeless, which make up a significant component, need to be near places that can help them with the problems that they have, right? So I've heard batted around, there are rumors that they're talking about creating a tent city in Fort Totten. I would vociferously oppose this, and this is a terrible, terrible idea for multiple reasons. One, again, no services in Fort Totten, one bus line from Fort Totten. Number two, public park, place where Little Leagues and all kinds of other public uses are used. It's just a terrible idea. And the thing is, while this seems to be, you know, an issue that might be transient in nature, it seems like for the, for the, for the near future, at the very least, this is not something that's going to, quote-unquote, go away. Therefore, knowing that there already is a situation with Anchor Inn, Anchor Inn is relatively close to this, to the LIRR. Again, can this district absorb thousands of migrants? No way. It can't happen. It's not gonna, if they try to do this in a way that's going to create problems for both the people who live here and the migrants themselves, I'll be the first one to be going after the government directly against the city.
Okay, Paul. Christopher?
Christopher? I think in the near yeah, in the short term, in the near term, you know, we all have to pitch in and do our part. You know, we are a city that is welcoming, and these are folks who are, you know, escaping from situations that, you know, I probably can't imagine. And so starting from that framework, you know, we do what we can to provide the resources and get them to places that can provide the services that they need to get back on their feet. To the extent that, you know, Paul was saying about, you know, it's a transit desert, I do agree that it is harder for folks in our district to move around and therefore to get access to the right services and to the right agencies. But with that being said, we're not going to solve any of the larger issues here without, you know, federal funding or without just changing the bird's eye view of, you know, what's going on here. But I do want to say, wow, lost my train of thought for a second. Oh, I'm sorry. So, you know, I am cautiously, happens to the best of them. I am cautiously optimistic that, you know, we have been in this kind of wait-and-see pattern, because, you know, oftentimes, whenever there are, you know, influxes of people into new communities, you know, it is painted as like a them versus us, like, oh, look at them coming in and draining our resources. And look, I am, I'm happy that we haven't had any big incidents. You know, but we do need to make sure that instead of defunding, we are making sure that our police have the resources to respond to a larger number of people in our district. I mean, that's just the sheer numbers game of it. And we need to make sure that we continue to kind of just monitor, wait and see, and make sure that we are doing all that we can for these migrants, but also for our community folks.
Thank you. So the next one, which we'll start with you again. Currently, there are stark differences between the mayor and many city council members on what next year's budget should contain. The mayor has enacted cuts across city agencies, arguing that we need to be fiscally prudent, given the cost of the migrant crisis. While several council members say we have enough revenue to restore the cuts and fund new initiatives, how would each of you approach budget negotiations with city hall this cycle, and what would you advocate for?
It's, so I do, I've come out and said this before, and I say it again, you know, I push back on the mayor's projections for this budget in terms of how much money is needed for, you know, the migrant situation, the crisis. You know, he's throwing out some really big numbers, and yes, it's going to put us in a hole, but I don't think it's the numbers. He's not backing it up with tangible evidence. And so I am tending to err on the side of some of the anyway, so the city hall is saying that, you know, four billion plus at least is needed for the migrant crisis. I'm not buying it. But to the extent that this administration and previous administrations could have already addressed this by addressing the homelessness issue, and so that we weren't, we are not at capacity already with beds and what have you. I think that was, they dropped the ball on that. But moving forward, in terms of any budget negotiations, you know, I alluded to this earlier in my opening, but public education is really what creates opportunities for next generations to surpass what their previous generations were able to provide for them. And so to that end, you know, that's just an untouchable for me. And secondly, I, you know, I just, in public safety, we have to be continuing to invest resources in our safety and our public NYPD and our DA's offices to make sure that we are doing all that we can for public safety. So public education and public safety would be the two that I would not touch.
Thank you.
So, you know, the budget process in the city is very interesting, because we have, I think this year is about a hundred and two billion dollars for the budget. So a good chunk of this budget is sort of already, what's the word I'm trying to think of? It's already called accounted for. So something like seventy to seventy-five percent of the budget is already allocated, right? It's allocated for pensions, it's allocated for union agreements and contracts, et cetera, et cetera. So there's really only a relatively small amount of money that, that they have wiggle room in, in terms of how they can shape the budget, whether they can cut the budget, et cetera, especially if they have agreements with various. So, for example, yesterday, the mayor made a huge announcement that they came up with a U F T agreement that's a five-year agreement with a fifteen percent, essentially a fifteen percent That's a five-year agreement with a fifteen percent, essentially a fifteen percent uh raise over five years. Well, if there's a budget crisis. How is this an agreement? Now, again, not not that I don't think teachers should get a raise, but. It it doesn't sound correct if someone is trying to cut other agencies to the bone, right? To to remove allocations for. Really important services throughout the city. So one of the committees that I want to serve on. Uh, one of the three main committees I want to serve on is finance. The finance committee for the council actually has an enormous amount of control. Over where that money is allocated for. And I would make sure that not only my district is taken care of, but all of the districts in the city are taken care of. That's one of the real collective. Bargaining that occurs with the council. And one thing that's very important that we have to remember, the council has essentially three powers. Land use, which of course is my specialty, right? Protect and obviously protecting land use is my main goal. Finance, the budget and oversight. Those are the three main powers that the council has. And I want to be the chair of the land use committee, sit on the finance committee. And sit on the oversight committee as well as the education committee. That's my goals. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. Um, the next question is for you. Um. Beginning in twenty twenty-four, big buildings that fail to reduce their carbon emissions to prescribed levels. Are scheduled to face fines. The carbon limits get stricter and by twenty thirty, which will likely drive fines higher. Now, this will affect condos and co-ops. Now, Councilmember Palladino has put forward legislation. That would delay its implementation by seven years to give building owners and managers more time to comply. What do you think of that proposal?
So the first thing I'm going to say is that um I know very well about local law ninety-seven. And which is what you're referring to, as well as uh Vicky's uh bill that she put in. Um, you know, a delay is is okay. But frankly, it's funny, the delay is exactly seven years, which is when she would be out of office. So uh she wouldn't have to deal with it. As soon as that delay was over. Um, uh, Councilmember Linda Lee. Has uh introduced a bill, she may have mentioned it in the last uh uh amount, uh last debate that you just had. Where that bill would actually exempt garden apartment complexes from local law ninety-seven. And I support full exemption of all co-ops and condos. From local law ninety-seven, particularly middle income. Co-ops and condos and where you can show income levels and property assessment, not the twenty million dollar per unit. Uh, co-ops in Manhattan, but the two hundred thousand dollar units, which are the main affordable housing. In the nineteenth council district for seniors on a fixed income for s- small families. My opponent, Tony Avella, does not support a carve-out for local law ninety-seven for co-ops and condos. Uh, which is really disturbing to me because again, this is something that is truly. Uh, what is left of the middle class in the city of New York along with. One and two family homes, and that is the bulk of our district. So it's really important. That would be the number one bill that I would introduce, should I be elected January first. Uh, uh, to to start in January first of twenty twenty-four to exempt, to carve out co-ops and condos. Uh, particularly middle income and based on property assessment.
Thank you, Paul. Christopher?
Just to pick back off of um Paul's point and, you know. The positions that Tony had previously taken and, you know, I've seen him waffle a few times at various forums, but I have to be crystal clear. This was, I remember it vividly. Um, this was the Douglasston Civic Forum. And he literally said, um, you know, essentially saying, the stakeholders need to bite the bullet.
Yep.
He said that. And when I heard it, I, you know, I didn't get mad outwardly. But I thought to myself, you know, when my parents, you know, as working class immigrants. Um, here in Northeast Queens, uh, was living in our two-bedroom co-op with me, my sister, mom and dad. Uh, could they have afforded to bite the bullet in a ten thousand dollar, um, essentially a tax, right? A one-time, not a lump sum tax of ten thousand dollars. Just to get their building uh up to code in a situation where they didn't ask for it. Uh, in situations where the law was written so that, you know, it was supposed to be that, you know, the largest greenhouse uh gas emissions. Emitters from long uh from Manhattan are being held to specific standards. Um, you know, the law wasn't written for these working-class communities in these co-ops and condos, you know, I I salute. Linda for proposing what she proposed. I mean, the question was specifically about. You know, Councilmember Palladino, you know, I don't think it's a bad idea in in terms of trying to push it back if that's the only means. Um, available on the table if there isn't enough. Uh, movement in in terms of an exemption. But I do have to make clear, you know, it's not because she's a Republican, but it is because of. Her nature uh and her divisiveness and her willingness to uh take shots at people and not be collaborative. Whatever she proposes, it's not going to get done. That's because she is who she is. And to that end, I ask uh folks. Who are, who are taking this issue up uh to believe in me that I can build the bridges. To push this, push these issues forward. And to be fair, I I do think Paul is a qualified candidate as well.
Thank you, as as well as you, Chris. Thank you. And if I could have a quick rebuttal, uh, I just want to add in a a little bit of information. Um, you know, one of the things that came out recently uh was that um. The co-op and condo board of Northeast Queens, which represents most of the co-ops and condos. Uh, not only in our district, but District Twenty-three, some in District Twenty. Uh, they sued the city back in the spring over this, uh, and there's a very good chance that their lawsuit is going to prevail. One of the people who did that was a guy named Bob Friedrich, who represents Glen Oaks Village. And Glen Oaks Village has twenty-nine hundred units. And in those twenty-nine hundred units, they, the cost of retrofitting, which is what we're talking about. Is fourteen point five million dollars and to, I'm sorry, twenty-four point five million dollars. And to do it to the highest level would be thirty-six million dollars. And here's, here's the rub, even after they would spend all of that money, they would still be fined. They would still be fined by the city because they cannot possibly meet the standard that was written for this law. It is impossible for these groups to meet that. So this is why, again. You know, uh, Tony's statement was, we should do a bond act and spend billions and billions of dollars. And if that doesn't work, then the city should do the work themselves. And we all know that the city has a long. And sordid history of screwing projects up, particularly for private property owners. And that's why we need an exemption, because even if, even if the money came through to fix this all up, they would still be on the hook. For fines every year, increasing every year, and it is completely unfair. This will bankrupt. Hundreds of thousands of people and destroy the co-op and condo system. In the, in Queens in particular, but certainly across the city, because I'm sure in Brooklyn, Bronx, Staten Island, et cetera, anywhere you have this. Kind of thing, and they're definitely all over the city. It will be a disaster for this city.
Thank you, Paul. So before we move on to some questions from the audience, we actually want to give an opportunity for the two of you to ask a question of one another. So Christopher, do you have a question for Paul?
Oh, boy. Here we go.
Wow.
Bert, first.
I was not expecting that.
Yep.
Oh, Paul, do you want to go first? Do you have a question for Christopher?
Oh, boy. Uh. Uh, I I mean. Okay, Chris, here's a softball for you. Uh, I just had my thirty-fifth high school reunion with Bronx Science uh a week and a half ago, right after we had the APA debate, which again, Tony Avella didn't show up to. As you remember, um. Uh, it was quite a wild ride and I'm not sure if you've been to any of your uh your Bronx Science reunions, but if you do, do you think you'll make it to thirty-fifth? And would you want to go?
Wow, yeah, I mean, hopefully I can make the would want to. In a little act, like it's an alumni uh events that they have. I went, I went back last year for um helping out with the seniors in terms of interviews with college prep and all of that. But yeah, any anytime I can get plugged in or plug back in with Bronx Science, um, that's certainly great. And you know what? I do have a question for Paul. I mean, so to the extent that, look, at the doors, when I'm knocking and talking to folks. You know, folks do say, I've heard this before and they've given credit to Tony to say, hey, here, you know, let's say flushing. Tony fought for us um to keep this a one, you know, single-family zoning. Um, Paul, so so to what extent uh is that true? And at what point did Tony, you know, kind of stop truly advocating. Uh, for folks in the community, because it does sound like he was doing some good work and then, you know, there's seems to be a disconnect.
Yeah, I mean, I I've said, thanks, Chris. I I've said it many times, you know, I was Tony's biggest supporter for many, many years. And anybody who knows me will will tell you that. Um, when Tony was on the city council, I I did all. I went out and surveyed as an urban planner. I went out and surveyed every single square inch of our community, every property. Uh, i- if you ask me where an address is, I can tell you not only what building is there, but when it was built and. You know, whether it was torn down in the last ten years, this is what I do. Okay, so I did the work. And Tony was the zoning chair at the time. This is in two thousand three to two thousand third, well, two thousand nine, let's say. And we had a great strategic uh and and symbiotic relationship. I did a lot of the work. I worked with the civics. He moved it politically and we we really did a lot of work. It started to change when he had aspirations to become mayor. And that was in two thousand nine, then it was borough president in two thousand thirteen, then it was mayor in two thousand seventeen, and even in the state senate. When he, I think he distanced himself because he had d- delusions of grandeur of of climbing the ladder. Uh, culminating in joining the IDC, which I think was a terrible mistake on his part, because frankly. For those of you who don't know, the the Independent Democratic Caucus, which aligned themselves with the Republican Party, uh, who controlled the state senate. Um, he said at one of our debates, and you'll remember this, Chris. I did it for you. I did it for the public. I did it for you. He didn't do it for the public. He did it for his own. His own personal reasons and, uh, you know, I can't knock him for it, but at the end of the day, I think. Had he, had he not done that, he'd probably still be state senator today. Uh, instead of desperately trying to become the councilperson again in our district. And I think, and again, Chris, you you and I have both been knocking a lot of doors. And we both have heard the responses and people are kind of saying the same thing, which is, yeah, he did a lot of great stuff ten, fifteen years ago. Where has he been for the last five years? Where has he been? And I think you'll agree with me a hundred percent with that.
Thank you.
No, I don't, I don't agree a hundred percent.
You don't agree?
Wait, I have a rebuttal. I have a rebuttal. Um, Paul said we can't knock him for joining the IDC.
No, 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 that's not what I said. No, I didn't say that. I said it was his decision. That's what I meant. It was his decision to do it. I think it was a terrible idea, a terrible move. I said that straight out. So I I didn't mean it that way.
Oh, okay, because yeah, I am totally knocking Tony for joining the IDC.
Absolutely. Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean it. I meant that, he made that decision, right? He made that decision. So I can't knock him for making the decision because it was his decision to make and it was a terrible decision.
That was a great question and there was a great response from both of you. Um, so a question from some of our viewers, um, for both of you. How will you represent this district differently from Vicky Palladino? Obviously, she describes herself as a common sense council member focused on crime and quality of life issues. Why would, why should voters choose you and how is your vision different? Christopher, let's start with you.
Sure. You know, I was talking to one voter at a door and this was in Whitestone and he said, hey, look, you know, I um went to. The pharmacy right next to Vicky Palladino's office. I was in there and I. You know, folks who come to get medicine are generally more often than not sick. And so I said, okay, so yeah, he said, I was wearing a mask. I go get my medicine, I come out and there she is in all her glory, you know, Councilmember Vicky Palladino. And she makes. You know, she chirps him and she says, oh, that's not what we do here, referring to his mask. And he's like, wait, what? He was just very startled and just kind of like walks away and then it hits him, recognizes the hair, the boots and is like, oh my god, that was Councilmember Vicky Palladino. And I think that's just, I'm going to bring back civility and accountability back to this position, back to this office. It's about representing everyone, even if your views don't necessarily line up. It's about, you know, engaging in a respectful manner. It's about making sure that folks trust us in the political process. Um, and that's something that we are just gravely missing here in local office.
Thank you, Paul.
So, uh, the first thing I'll say is, um, I have, again, thirty years of experience working in this community. I I'm, I don't know how else to say it. It's something that I've been doing, working with. The homeowners associations, the civic associations, the community boards, the elected officials. Again, not as an elected official, but getting the work done, right? And I think. You know, with all due respect, Vicky's election in. Uh, two thousand twenty-one was not so much a pro-Vicky vote as an anti-Tony vote. Uh, and I say this with all seriousness. Um, Vicky has. Uh, certainly done things that I wouldn't do. Um, I am a very careful person and I speak my mind. I think, I think you understand that from this debate. I speak my mind, I say what I mean. But that doesn't mean you have to be rude and it doesn't mean you have to put people down. And I'll give you one example. When I had my big press conference uh in Douglasston, which uh your paper covered actually. Um, which was a big deal. Uh, it was a very, very big deal. We, we had over two hundred people show up. From all over Queens, all over the city, all over the metropolitan area. And in fact, Chris, that was the first time I met Chris, because he actually showed up. Um, I invited every elected official, including Vicky, to come to my event. Because I felt it was an all hands on deck situation that if we did not stop this, we wouldn't have anything to fight about. Right? We wouldn't have anything to discuss because our communities would literally be destroyed by the governor. And to her credit, she came and I I I told everybody, if you come, one, you have to write a letter or go on record as being opposed. To the governor's plans. And number two, you're not allowed to speak. No elected officials were allowed to speak, none. Okay? Vicky unfortunately was unable to get upstairs because there were so many people at this event. That fire code stopped her and she was stuck downstairs for forty-five minutes, but that's not the, I I, again, I appreciate that she came. Here's the problem, the letter that she wrote, half of it was totally fine and normal. We have to stop the governor. We have to protect our communities. The other half was a rant about Democrats. And that the Democrats did this and the Democrats did that. And then at the very bottom, it said. All of the local elected officials have to work together to stop this. Well, if you're attacking. The Democrats who make up the vast majority of the elected officials in your community, how are you going to work with those people? And I think that that's sort of the crux of the issue when it comes to Vicky, is that she alienates people. Uh, all the time and we can't afford that in this district. We need someone who can work with other people, who has a proven track record of doing that. Tony doesn't have that. Vicky doesn't have that. Chris, great guy, and and I, again, I I say this without insulting, untested only because he's not been in the arena. But I'm sure he'd make a fine councilperson. And I believe that I I would make a a fine councilperson here as well in that respect.
Thank you, Paul. We'd like to insert more questions from the viewers. So for the next question, we'll have you start first, Paul. Um, the mayor has a plan to force two hundred fifty thousand retired city employees into a Medicare Advantage plan. Now, do you support this? And if not, what is your position?
So I am with the retirees against the mayor and um this is one of those places where Chris and I disagree a little. Uh, both, both Tony and Chris have received the U F T endorsement, the United Federation of Teachers endorsement. I refused. To respond to their questionnaire as well as the other unions who were involved in this, because this was a plan. Cooked up by the unions with former Mayor de Blasio to take away the Medicare benefits. From over two hundred and fifty thousand city retirees, by the way, including my parents, including lots of people I know, okay? It's one thing for the city to come up with a new contract for new hires and change benefits packages. But to retroactively do this to the retirees is wrong on every level. And. When Tony was confronted with this, he said, it's a disgrace, but I still want the U F T endorsement. Um, that doesn't work for me. I can't, I do not want an endorsement from a group. That is actively trying to hurt their own retirees as well as the rest of the city retirees. So I am. Absolutely one hundred percent behind the New York City public retirees. I am in contact with the group. And I will fight this to the end. And in fact, that would be bill number two. To make sure that this doesn't happen and I support them going back to court for the third time to stop exactly what the mayor's doing as well as the unions.
Thank you, Paul. Christopher? Thank you, Paul and Christopher.
Yeah, I think in just like legal jargon or contract speak, it's called, you know, not bargained for. And so to that end, you know, for every person who worked, you know, twenty-five, thirty years. Um, with a promise to say, hey, at the end of all of this, thank you for your service, and here are the terms which we're going to spend your retirement. Um, you know, mom currently is a U F T member. She's a paraprofessional and works with special needs children in third grade. Um, generally speaking, U F T has, has done a lot for her. Um, and for that, you know, I am grateful to U F T, and I know generally speaking, U F T does a great job. Um, but. You know, when it comes to this specific issue, um, it was, you know, the previous leadership or previous negotiations, as Paul alluded to with. Previous administration, where, yeah, um. The New York City retirees were thrown under the bus, and it's just quite not fair. Uh, to the extent that there is litigation ongoing, um, to help this, to turn it around. You know, I was heartened to see the comptroller. Um, you know, his interpretation and, you know, putting in mechanisms, uh, to say that this is not right. I mean, there are folks fighting. Uh, and to the extent that this was not bargained for, and just not fair for New York City retirees, uh, to that end, I do stand with them as well.
And a quick statement on that, uh, again, the comptroller, uh, is opposed to this, but the mayor. Announced this big deal, and the mayor then today filed for Medicare. Uh, Medicare Advantage. He filed the paperwork, even though the comptroller turned it down. So again, the mayor ran in twenty twenty-one. In opposition of this. He ran supporting the retirees, and he did a one-eighty. So we have to make sure as council members, we hold him accountable. We hold the other council people who are supporting this accountable. And as I said, I will never, ever support groups. That are working against the interests of the retirees or their own members. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, now we just want to move on to closing statements. Uh, two minutes for a closing statement, and Christopher, if you'd kick that off, please.
Yes, so, uh, again, Schneppes, thank you so much for providing this forum, and hopefully, you know, your viewers. Uh, during this live Zoom, or maybe in the future, can see a little bit more about my platform. And just truly understand that, you know, as someone born and raised here in Northeast Queens, um, you know, who went to Saint Robert's. Uh, church growing up and did Boy Scouts there, and I played Little League Baseball in Little Lake Douglasston, as well as Baseball Summer League. Um, you know, this is my community. And I've shown that by serving for over seven years as a prosecutor at the Queens District Attorney's Office. You know, public service is all that I've ever known. And, you know, to the extent that we need a fresh, sensible voice to move our community forward, you know, I know for a fact that that's me. Um, but, but also to the extent that Paul referenced this before, you know, someone like Tony. You know, one of my, one of the opponents that is just missing from this room right now, um, just have. Every time he was in a position to do good for the community, his eyes started wandering to another seat. And that's not someone that we want. Uh, in this situation, in this seat, representing our community here. Because lord knows, you know, as soon as he wants something, you know, Tony's eyes start wandering again. And that's not what's best for us. We need someone who's going to fight, who's going to show up. Showing up is, you know, the name of the game. And, you know, I know for a fact that that's me, so I am asking for your support as we move forward for a safer and stronger Queens. Um, but to the extent that my colleague and opponent, um, Paul Graziano. Also shows up, you know, he, uh, is an expert when it comes to land use issues and zoning. Um, and to that end, you know, hats off to you, Paul, for always showing up and always fighting for our community. So thank you for that.
Thank you so much, Chris.
And Paul, uh, you, you, it's your statement now?
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for coming. Uh, thank you for the plaudits, Chris, and you, 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 you know, uh, it's appreciated and, and right back at you. So. What makes me? The best candidate for this job? I've spent my entire life in this district. I've lived here for fifty-two years. I, I live in the house next door to the house I grew up in. My parents are still next door. And I'm raising my seven-year-old, uh, right next door to my parents, which is, you know, kind of a, kind of the American dream, right? I have worked to protect our neighborhoods. For thirty years, uh, since I was twenty-two years old, I've been doing this. I helped to downzone this entire council district. I worked to stop in the last three years, stop the city government. And the state government from destroying. Our communities, and not just our communities, but the entire state. In the last two years, uh, eliminating single-family zoning, forcing five hundred percent increases of density around train stations. Taking away local home rule, our rule. Meaning the people in the city of New York and in this council district. I stopped that from happening. That's what sets me apart. From those other people that I'm running against. And here's the other thing, if I lose this race. I'm still going to be doing this, because this is what I do. So if I am elected. I feel I can take this to the next level. There are many, many things that I could do even more for our council district and for Northeast Queens than I can do. As a civilian, as a expert, as someone who works with community. I can take that to the next level. So I hope you'll consider voting for me. Again, thank you, Chris. It's always a pleasure to see you. It's, it's sad. It's a sad, awkward situation that Tony Avella refuses to come and have a conversation with the media. Forget about us. It's really a sad situation, and I hope, I hope that those people watching and. I'm sure lots of people will be watching this since you're recording it, I assume. That the voters understand the stakes, the stakes that we are up against. We need. People. To be. Voting to protect their communities. Vote for the right person. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much to both of you. And yes, this is recorded, and we will be putting it out on all social media and tagging you both. So thank you, everyone. That concludes your Democratic primary debate for the nineteenth council district. Please remember that only voting in the primary begins on Saturday, June seventeen, and the primary day itself is Tuesday, June twenty-seven. Visit the Board of Elections website at vote.nyc to find your early, early polling site and local polling place. A reelection, large or small, is an important one, so please vote. Thank you all for watching and have a great evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you to our incredible moderators.
Absolutely.